Also the order, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and veritable, just as it is.
Okay, we do not have any announcements tonight, so we'll start with the proclamations. We have the Disability Awareness Proclamation. Cecilia, will you be teaming up that video for us?
There's, there's a video, yeah, that she's gonna share. Well, if, if, if you don't mind, Selena, I'm just gonna share a little bit about March Disability Awareness Month. It is Fisher's March Disability Awareness Month 2021, building our inclusive community. If you go to the Fisher's website at fishers.in.us/disabilityawareness, we have all of the events that we've presented this year virtual, online, that you can see. And on the landing page on accessibility accommodations, we have resources and information about the Fisher's Advisory Committee on Disability. And I want to thank the March Disability Awareness Month Committee for all their work and efforts to put on these presentations, to provide more information about inclusivity in our community, about the celebration and accomplishments of talented artists and performers and, and people in our community who are making a difference in advocating for those who have disabilities. So I appreciate everybody's help and also the Fisher's Arts Council, who has been a wonderful partner, along with Connor Prairie, to provide a virtual gallery of artistic work made by people with physical and intellectual disabilities this year.
The month of March has been designated as Disability Awareness Month to celebrate and recognize people with disabilities by the Governor of the State of Indiana.
Whereas disability is a natural part of the human experience.
And in no way diminishes the right of individuals with disabilities to live independently.
Enjoy self-determination, make choices, contribute to society, and experience full
in the economic, political, social, cultural.
And educational mainstream of American society.
And whereas family members, friends, and members of the community
can play a central role in enhancing the lives of people with disabilities.
Especially when the family and community are provided with necessary support services.
And public and private employers are aware of the capabilities of people with disabilities.
To be engaged in competitive work in inclusive settings.
Properly include providing individuals with disabilities
the opportunities and support.
To make informed choices and decisions.
Live in homes and communities where such individuals can exercise their full rights and responsibilities as citizens.
Pursue meaningful and productive lives.
Contribute to their family, community, state, and nation.
Therefore, I Scott Fadness, Mayor of the City of Fisher's, along with the Honorable City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of March as Disability Awareness Month in the City of Fisher's. Furthermore, I encourage the citizens of Fisher's to seek counsel and input from any person or group with knowledge and expertise in matters concerning disabilities.
Thank you so much for sharing that.
Just real quick, Council President Stoller, I want to single out Cecilia Kobel and her efforts yet again this year. She has truly built an amazing program. And I know it's a lot of hours and a lot of effort, and she's tireless in her pursuit of making sure that everyone's voice is heard and that people live without limits. And so Cecilia, thank you again for being a champion in our community.
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
You know, Cecilia, I'm very proud of the way that you've not only brought this into our community, but I see you reaching out to other communities and showing Fisher's as a leader in accepting disabilities in those communities. So thank you for representing us in that way.
Thank you, President Stoller. I want to say it takes a village and it has been a collaboration of different stakeholders, businesses, individuals with disabilities, educators, providers of services, and the community coming together. We, we have started a movement. I'm happy to say that Carmel, over the summer, started their Carmel Advisory Committee on Disability. And the City of Lawrence, just a couple of weeks ago, they announced they have a Lawrence Advisory Council for Disability. So I'm really proud that we've led the way and we've been helping those cities establish their own committees. So thank you very much.
Our next proclamation is Veteran War, Vietnam Vet- Vietnam War Veterans Day. That can be a tongue twister.
A tongue twister. It's, it's my honor.
So I'm gonna turn that over to Councilor DeRimer.
Thank you. It's my honor to have the Mayor's Vietnam War Veterans Day proclamation read by George Theropoulos. George just got out of the hospital. George is a Vietnam veteran with four Purple Hearts and a Silver Star. He's a good friend of all of us. George, would you please come forward to read the proclamation? And all veterans, please stand.
Thank you very much for this time to present this proclamation. City of Fisher's Proclamation. Whereas the Vietnam War Veterans Recognition Act designates March 29th of each year as Veteran, as Vietnam War Veterans Day. And whereas we recognize the veterans of our armed forces who served our country in this Vietnam War. And whereas more than 58,000 members of the United States Armed Forces, including over 1,500 Hoosiers, lost their lives in the Vietnam War, and more than 300,000 were wounded during this horrific war. And whereas our nation has learned much since its birth, no lesson is fundamental as the one learned after the Vietnam War to support and respect our veterans and armed forces members. And whereas we shift our thoughts and prayers to the memories and to the families who cer- who never made it back home and pay tribute to the ones we lost in Vietnam. And whereas may we use this day to recall what was given by the men and women who fought in Vietnam and acknowledge how these, their sacrifices have impacted and will continue to impact lives across America. Therefore, Scott Fadness, Mayor of the City of Fisher's, does hereby proclaim March 29th as Vietnam War Veterans Day in the City of Fisher's, and all residents are encouraged to celebrate it. Signed this third day of March 2021 by Scott Fadness, Mayor, City of Fisher's.
Thank you, Mayor.
I want to say thank you for your service. We are now down to the City Service Awards. There's a video. Or, City Staff Awards video.
You want to do the donation first?
Let's do the donation first.
Presentation's A.
Presentation A, donation from Wine Time, I'm back to, Club of Britton Falls, Councilor DeRimer.
I'd like to introduce Larry and Sherri Rash from Britton Falls, Chairman of the Wine Time Club.
Yes, I'm representing Britton Falls Wine Time Club. We have decided to disband because of COVID. It's just not easy to taste wine, share wine right now. We are very thankful to the Fisher's Police Department for all they do for Britton Falls. We had a balance of a little over $1,800 in our checking account. A board member donated a little more, so we have a total of $2,000 to give to the Fisher's Police Department, and thank you for their service.
Chief, if you'd come forward, please.
Thank you for your donation to the community. It is very much appreciated. We do appreciate the work of our officers.
I also want to say I just really appreciate Britton Falls residents demonstrating the positive outcomes of drinking wine. It's really extraordinary. Thank you for sharing.
Okay, next we are down to the City Staff Awards.
So this year's City of Fisher's recipients of the SMART Award goes to DPW's Concrete Crew as well as Tabitha Miller from Fleet. So we have, many of our major thoroughfares are actually made of concrete. We started to
Hold on. There we go.
So this year's City of Fisher's recipients of the SMART Award goes to DPW's Concrete Crew as well as Tabitha Miller from Fleet. So we have, many of our major thoroughfares are actually made of concrete. We started to experience some premature failure of those, those assets. And we put on RFP to understand how much it would cost to get those repaired. It was extraordinary. It was several millions of dollars to get this repaired. So our DPW team went to work, started to do research, went up to Minnesota to understand the science behind fixing these roads. They put a team in place. Then entered Tabitha Miller to find the assets and the equipment to actually do this work. Turns out that the industry hasn't manufactured these since around 1970. And so Tabitha, with her subject matter expertise, her keen eye, scoured the country really to find a piece of equipment that may have had a tree or two growing out of it. Purchased it, brought it back to Indiana, brought it back to life, got it functioning, and then maintained it so that the Concrete Crew could literally save the city in millions of dollars. So Tabitha, thank you very much for your work. And again, this is the award for the SMART Award for this year. So thank you very much.
I want to thank the Public Works Concrete Crew. They won the SMART Award this year, and justly so. They've saved the taxpayers millions of dollars by coming up with a new procedure to fix the multiple concrete roads we have in the City of Fisher's. It was hard work. It was new. It was different, but they took it on like they always do and did an incredible job. So on behalf of the City of Fisher's, on behalf of my administration, congratulations to the Public Works team. Thank you for all you do.
Congratulations to the Department of Public Works employee Jerry Hep on winning the 2020 Vibrant Award for the City of Fisher's. I know that Jerry is the most accomplished customer service rep that I have ever encountered in my 30 years with the city. I know that with every phone call that comes in, every employee or citizen of the Fisher's is in capable hands, his bright attitude and ability to just diffuse any hostile situation that comes in. He does a wonderful job with us each and every time. So congratulations, Jerry. Well deserved.
I have the pleasure today to award Jennifer Rome, the Entrepreneurial Award for 2020. It's hard to believe, Rome, that you've only been with us for a year, a little over a year. I think she's literally worked with every department in our city and with all of our software platforms. She's implemented multiple softwares this year, QMD, some smart sheet solutions for multiple departments, C-click Fix. So lots of different platforms she's been able to utilize. She also pushes the limits of those softwares. So we've even had the vendors reach out to us on some of the unique and innovative things that Rome has been able to do with those platforms. And they really have utilized us as a roadmap for some of their future plans for how we're gonna utilize things. viewpoint Cloud, for instance, has spotlighted us in our use cases that we've come up with and using that for our health department that we brought onboard this year. So again, very well deserved. I look forward to working with you in future years on all of your innovative creations that we come up with.
Thank you so much, Mayor, for the hard work of your employees, the guidance and the leadership that you can provide to them and to the community to have such awards. So thank you for that.
It's a, it's an amazing team, and thank you for allowing us to share a few of those stories with you tonight.
As we move on, it is the Service Award Recognition. We have Mayor Fadness, Eric Petthel, and Todd Succi to present the awards tonight.
All right, Paul. I'm gonna skip ahead then. I want to The day was February 1st, 1991. To put things in perspective, I was nine years old. When Eric Petthel walked into the garage, which I believe at that point was what is now our Fleet Garage, is that correct, Eric? And for his first day of work with the City of Fisher's. At that time, the Town of Fisher's. To put things in perspective, as Eric used to tell me this story, his first day of work consisted of going to Hall and Park for the groundbreaking of Hall and Park to, to put things in perspective. He started as a laborer here with the Town of Fisher's and was quickly promoted to foreman in June of that same year. So from February to June, he was promoted to foreman. From there, in 1993, he became a construction inspector. And not too long after that, again promoted in 1995 to chief inspector. Now what's important, what's important for all of you to note, from 1995 to 2006, as Eric oversaw the chief inspection role for the Town of Fisher's, it's difficult to fathom the amount of growth and the amount of development in terms of infrastructure that Eric was responsible for the quality of. He would tell me oftentimes, when he was talking about the old war stories, it wasn't unthinkable for him to have to be watching over 10 or 12 or 13 subdivisions all under construction at the same time, trying to ensure that our town was getting the utmost in quality and consistency from infrastructure. In 2006, he was yet again promoted into Assistant Director of Engineering and Public Works. About that time, there was a young cocky intern that started with the Town of Fisher's. And I got to know Eric from 2006 and on, and he and I struck up many conversations as he was the Assistant Director. And one thing that was clear to me as I talked to Eric was his love for this community, his commitment to making sure that the right thing was always done, his desire to want to see our city continue to excel, and for everyone to be proud of the work that he did and that his organization did. That came into play in no uncertain terms when there was the quick departure of our engineering director. And lo and behold, we had an aggressive capital campaign that we needed to get done. And I looked to Eric time and time again to help me figure out how to get these road projects done. I can remember one particular weekend, I was the deputy town manager. Our town manager had made a commitment to the school system that we would have a particular road open by opening day of school. And about three weeks or four weeks before school was to open, the town manager came to me and said, "This is gonna be open, right?" And it was clear that it was not going to be. And I went to Eric and I said, "We gotta, we gotta figure this out." And so to Eric's credit, he called a number of the contractors out there and literally built a bridge in a weekend and got the road back open for our schools. It was that type of reliability and commitment to service that really caught my eye about Eric. So around 2008, and Eric can remember this well, I drafted a memo to our town manager saying that I thought it was time that we changed as an organization and that we needed to reorganize and that several departments needed to combine into one. And I thought and believed that Eric Petthel was the right person to lead such a difficult venture, has to bring all these different cultures together to start maintaining assets for the whole community in order to save money and find economies of scale. And I gave Eric a heads up. I told him, "Hey, just so you know, you're gonna get a call from the town manager. He's probably gonna promote you, and by the way, you're gonna have all these responsibilities." And I don't think it was more than maybe 10 minutes later, Eric got that call, came back to me and said, "What the hell did you do?" But Eric had to walk into several different divisions within our organization who had never met each other and form what we now know as the Department of Public Works here in the City of Fisher's. And the cultures could not have been more different or more dysfunctional. And his consistency, his, his willingness to talk to his guys, his humility, led him through those difficult days of consolidation. As they were consolidating, I thought, boy, wouldn't it be great to give Eric and the Department of Public Works big challenges to, to rally towards? So the schools were in a difficult financial time, and they weren't certain that they were gonna be able to keep all the teachers in the classroom. And we struck up an idea that we could do all their snow removal and all their grounds maintenance. And by doing that, we might be able to keep some teachers in the classroom. So to Eric's credit, I sat down with him and I said, "Hey, I've got this idea. I would like you to take over all of the snow removal and all the grounds maintenance for the schools." And he said, "Okay." And he figured it out. And to this day, we continue to do all that, saving the schools significant dollars. Eric has turned what was a disjointed and siloed organization into one group that has an unbelievable work ethic and always open for new things, always open for new challenges. Just this year, just this year, we decided we needed a mass vaccination site for our residents. We told Eric and his team on, I don't know, maybe a Tuesday, let's say, and that we needed that building ready in less than three weeks. And in less than three weeks, that building was ready to serve our residents. Time and time again, Eric and his team have led the charge quietly, without looking for one bit of appreciation or recognition to serve our community. Some of you may know this, Eric and I enjoy plowing snow and have plowed snow together for a number of years. There was an incident where Eric and I were in a cul-de-sac plowing snow, and Eric hit me with his vehicle. And to this day, he denies it, but it was clear, the evidence shows that I was in the right and he was in the wrong, but he'll never admit it. But his dedication to his guys, the fact that he's willing to go work with them speaks volumes. Recently, Eric has been dealing with a difficult illness and struggling with a lot of pain. And still, still, when we had our big snow, who was I plowing snow with that afternoon? Eric. So what does 30 years get you here in the City of Fisher's? More responsibility, more work, but just occasionally we need to take a moment and thank those individuals who have time and time again always been there for our community. So with that, I'd, I'd ask you all to give a round of applause to Eric Petthel for all of his work in the City of Fisher's. This is his better half, Lisa.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Do you have your CDL license?
I do not have my CDL license, but I do not drive in those big vehicles, just to be clear. Selena, the other two are not here tonight?
Okay.
So we'll go ahead and move on to our final presentation.
Well, despite them not being here, Eric, I don't know if Todd is here, could you please let them know that we're very grateful for their years of service to the community, the way they've served our residents? Very appreciative of that, thank you. The next item is the Hamilton County Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Danielle Carey-Tolan will be here to present that.
Good evening. Thank you, President Stoller and members of the council for hearing us this evening. I'm Debbie Drusko, Delaware Township Trustee, and Doug Allman is to my right, Fall Creek Township Trustee. We're just here to publicly thank Danielle for her commitment to see the program through that she's going to describe for you. The Hamilton County trustees came together to see that we could have this program in the hands of people that best know our people and have worked with them, and we're really looking forward as it kicked off today. So this is Danielle, and she's from-
Westfield.
Washington Township. So, and Doug and I will be glad to answer questions at the end if you have any for us.
Thank you, Mayor and council members for having me tonight. I'm Danielle Carey-Tolan. I'm the Hamilton County Trustees Association President and also the Westfield Washington Township trustee. First, before, I'm not going to read the packet to you guys because you guys know how to read, so I'm not going to do that to you. What I am going to tell you is some quick facts, though, and then get into a little bit of why this program is in our hands. So you in Fishers have over almost 8,000 renters in Fishers. That was based on savvy numbers back in 2018 because that's our most current numbers that we have. Last year, the Fishers Townships helped 368 people in your township, so that's renters and mortgage holders. That was a total of over $235,000 in assistance. They referred out almost 440 referrals to other agencies, that's churches, nonprofits, and other organizations in your community. That total was 280,000. So there's a need. Most people don't realize that there's a need in Hamilton County, right? So that's why this program is in our hands as the county. The county commissioners applied for this grant that was part of the new stimulus bill in December, and then they awarded the Township Association to administer it through Westfield Washington Township. It kicked off today, this morning at 9:00 a.m. We have over 100 applications so far. We're going to have more. We have $10 million to distribute. That money is just for renters in Hamilton County. It's also for people that have been affected by COVID, and they have to have less than 80% of their area median income to be eligible for this program. There will be a max for each variation, but if they are needing assistance in any variation, we will help them through this money. So that will alleviate us as township trustees, but then we can also help stopgap some of those other rents because I know currently in our offices, we're seeing renters come in up from $7,000 to $10,000 needing assistance from back pay. So this is really going to help us in our communities to keep people in their apartments, keeping landlords renting, making sure that they're paying their bills as well. I'm not going to read any more of the other stuff because I, again, said that you guys can read. Do you guys have any questions about the program? You guys are easy. I was bombarded by no one.
Excuse me. Thank you for the information. Is this a one-time application, like one-type assistance only for one opportunity and that's it? You can't go back and-
So this is all in, right now, currently for arrears. So we're going all the way back to April of last year of 2020. So anything in the arrears currently, we'll be able to assist. Say, for instance, they can't pay for April, and they already know that, they'll have to wait until April to reapply, but they can use the same code. So everything, we've created a very smart online application process, so all they have to do is go to hctaindiana.com to apply, and everything's there. We sent out over 300 partner applications, and we have 68 partners in Hamilton County that are assisting us. Any more questions? You guys are quiet. You guys want to move on. You guys have a big agenda. Well, thank you, guys, for having us tonight. We appreciate it. Please reach out to me if you have any questions about the program. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that, for sharing that with us and for helping those in need within our community. The next item is the Finance Committee Report. John, can you provide us with the Finance Committee Report?
Thank you very much, Selena. The Finance Committee did meet last Wednesday, where there's two items on the agenda that we recommended for approval, Item 7B on the Consent Agenda and Item 11 on the Cumulative Capital Development Fund. That's it.
Thank you so much for that. Next, we'll all have an update from our Health Department. Monica Holtz, Public Health Director, will be providing us with an update.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for your patience. Good evening, councilors. Thanks for the opportunity to update you on the status of the pandemic tonight and for your ongoing support for the Health Department this past year. This week, we have marked one year since the first case was recorded in Fishers. Since that- Sure. Since that time, we've experienced the following. 93,363 residents, 100% of us, have been affected by the global pandemic. We've all had to readjust our priorities, adapt to constantly changing situations, guidelines, and norms, and learn new flexibilities. 9,913 Fishers residents have tested positive from the virus. This is 10.6% of our residents with a confirmed positive test. We have yet to fully understand what long-term effects these residents may suffer. Hopefully, they will be few. 99 of our residents have died due to COVID. Thankfully, this number is lower than other jurisdictions have faced, but this is still 99 people whose lives were cut short as a result of this global pandemic and 99 residents whose families have been affected by their loss. In order to assure access to testing, we've set up a testing site which could incredibly see over 600 persons a day at our max capacity back in December. We have swabbed over 55,000 noses for COVID in less than 11 months. 41,500 of those were through the testing process set up at the start of the Health Department, and the other 15,000 or so have been through the state's assistance with their portal, also in our same facility and with our same staff. We have experienced percent positivity rates and case incidence rates higher than we would have ever thought possible when we developed our community risk rating scale. Today, our case incidence rate dropped below 10 cases per 100,000 for the first time since we revealed our community risk rating scale back at the beginning of September. Our percent positivity rate today of 7.3% seems impossibly low after having rates over 20% this past winter, but there was actually a time this summer when the rate was under 3%. We've come a long way. We've inspected over 100 establishments for COVID-related complaints, and we have processed over 200 special event and plan approvals to assure COVID medication steps have been followed. Today, I am also pleased to show you that we've developed a vaccine dashboard, which just went live on Thursday. There are two screens here. I tried to squeeze them into one slide, so it's a little messy. I apologize. Both represented, both of them are represented here. As of now, we vaccinated, as of the end of today, so this vaccine dashboard is updated weekly, but as of the end of the day today, we had vaccinated 9,317 persons with a safe and effective COVID vaccine at our facility, and over 23% of our residents have received at least their first shot. We are nearly there. We just received more allocations of vaccine today and are actively adding more appointments for our residents at our facility. We have also assured opportunities for our educators now that that group is eligible. So we will continue to work on this and look forward to future bright updates as we head into the future. Thank you for the opportunity.
You're welcome. Thank you for the good news. We hope it's even better news next time. So we will move on to the Consent Agenda. There are two items on the Consent Agenda, a request to approve prior meeting minutes from the council's February 19, 2021 regular council meeting, and Item B, a resolution authorizing the controller to transfer city funds.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to item number eight, Economic Development. R031521A, a request to approve economic development and land acquisition, buy-in among Thompson Thrift. Megan will be presenting this.
Good evening. For the record, Megan Baumgartner, Director of Economic and Community Development for the city of Fishers. My first item tonight is an economic development agreement and land acquisition agreement for the Fishers Villas project. This project is being pursued by Thompson Thrift for approximately 25 acres just south of Fishers District along USA Parkway and IKEA Way. The area, it's a little tricky to see here. The project specifically for Thompson Thrift is within this blue line, this villa site, but the whole project area is approximately 35 acres. They're anticipating a $57 million investment for their villas project and estimated 240 units. What's unique about this project is it is villas and attached townhomes, which we haven't seen with the recent rental project here in Fishers for some time. Within this site, they, as part of their commitment to the city and as part of our incentive package, they're planning a linear park, which is the red line on this exhibit. It's approximately 1.6 acres that will go through the park or through their development up to Fishers District and creating a great amenity for people within this development. In addition, as part of the city's incentive, we're providing a grant for the public infrastructure, which is the areas in green, which is for road construction and road improvements. For the total incentive package between the park site, we're offering a grant of $300,000 towards that development or the construction of that. The city will also be granted the park at the end of the project, and then also $900,000 of grant funds towards the public infrastructure construction. Additionally, we are seeking a land acquisition agreement for the 10.5 acres that's along the western side of this project, where this yellow box is. As part of Thompson Thrift, rather, being able to purchase this entire development area, they were required to purchase this 10 and 1/2 acres from Sunbeam, but it's not included in Thompson Thrift's project. So we're seeking the land acquisition agreement for this 10 and 1/2 acres in particular. With this land acquisition agreement, there's carry costs that are associated with that for not to exceed $5.9 million. But the great thing about these land acquisition agreements is that we get to partner with Thompson Thrift to find a development that we think is a good fit for this area. And if we don't have that project determined or identified by December 1st of 2024, that's the point that the city would enter into an agreement to purchase that land. We're excited to work with Thompson Thrift. We think that this is a great area and are confident that we'll have a development ready or proposed to come forward, hopefully in the near future. Talking about the scope of the project, with these 240 units, with these being luxury rentals, we're estimating $800,000 of annual property taxes that would be generated from this project. So this is a great boost to the area, a great amenity for this location, and Thompson Thrift is also here to speak about the economic development agreement and the PUD that will be before you later this evening. Eric, would you like to say anything about the economic development agreement?
Well, just very quickly, Eric Wojak with Thompson Thrift. We're just thrilled again to work with the city of Fishers. You guys have been great partners in the past. We couldn't be more pleased with Fishers District, and we are excited for this to be a natural outflow of that dynamic mixed-use project. So thank you again for your consideration.
Happy to answer any questions about this project.
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution R031521A?
So move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Pete, second by John. This is now open for discussion. Does any councilor members have comments or questions regarding this item?
Probably a couple of comments or a couple of questions, if I may. Just by approving this, and just for the record, we still have to go through a rezone process to do this project. So just so folks that maybe are listening in, just because we approve this tonight does not mean this project is going to go forward. We've got to go through a process, got to go through the planning commission. So just to make sure people understand clearly that just because we vote on this doesn't mean this automatically gets approved. So just kind of make sure everyone's clear on that particular issue.
That's correct.
Okay.
So it'll go before, I'm sorry.
Gotta sure hope so.
Yes, it'll have its first reading for the PUD, which includes the rezone later this evening.
Right.
I have another question. Can I jump in? Megan, can you break down just a little bit more? There's 1.2 million in the commercial property grant. Can you break that down? There's $300,000. Can you just itemize that just a little bit more?
Yeah, absolutely. So the park site, this area in the red, this is where the $300,000 is going towards, I think I have that, or I don't think I have that mixed up.
Well, and that's why, actually, that's why I was asking, just kind of that breakdown, and I want to be sure the resolution is accurate.
Sure. So the, I'm sorry, I had it switched. So the $300,000 is towards this road, the public infrastructure piece in the area in green. So this includes an east-west road that'll be constructed between the south side of the Fishers District project and the north side of the Fishers Villas project. Then you can kind of see this little green area here. There'll be an additional access point onto USA Parkway. That's where there's going to be needed some additional road improvements here. So our anticipation is $300,000 towards that, but we do think that it's going to exceed that cost, which Thompson Thrift is then covering that amount. Similarly, for the park site, this 1.6 acres of the linear park that'll go through the development up to Fishers District, we're granting the $900,000 grant towards that amount. Again, we think it'll exceed that amount, and Thompson Thrift is then covering that. The proceeds from that are coming from our downtown TIF, our Tax Increment Financing District, which is, it's very well capitalized right now, so there's nothing that we're having to issue any sort of debt for. You and I had had a great conversation over the weekend, or on Friday, about the kind of return on investment for this project. So with it generating $800,000 of annual property taxes, plus we're not waiving any of the permitting or impact fees, the return on investment of this project is pretty significant, and Thompson Thrift has been a great partner. And again, at the end, in addition to those property taxes, we will be deeded this park for public use as well.
And when we say linear park, that's a trail?
It's a trail, yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Do you have any other questions?
Selena, real quick, I just wanted to mention, I've had some discussions with the city attorney over the-
Selena, real quick, I just wanted to mention, I've had some discussions with the city attorney over the last couple of weeks. Since a portion of this in nature is a residential project, and my current employer is involved in similar residential-type projects. Just to be clear, I will be recusing myself. I just want to provide a little bit of a reason when you hear that. I know that they did have some meetings with some of the neighbors. I was able to speak to John. He's in the adjacent district and he was able to attend and help guide some of those neighbors. So I just wanted to let you know that. So it'd be this, and I know there's maybe some future votes on this particular project, and that's what I would be doing. Thanks.
Okay, we'll close the discussion. I'll call for a vote on resolution R zero three one five two one A. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Moving on to R zero three one five two one B, a request to approve. Hang on, I have to, I'm going between two documents. A request to approve confirmatory resolution designating certain property as an economic development revitalization, revitalization area and authorizing abatement.
Thank you again. For the record, Megan Baumgartner, Director of Community and Economic Development for the City of Fishers. This is the final step in the economic development improvement, or approval of the former Marsh site at Ninety-Sixth Street and Lantern Road. As we mentioned a couple of months ago, Anderson Schoenrock and his company, Memory Ventures, are looking to purchase the former Marsh site from Strongbox and redevelop that into his corporate headquarters, bringing about a hundred jobs to that area and making some really needed improvements to this corridor and to that site in particular. In January, we had the declaratory resolution for that project come forward. This is, again, the final step for this of the confirmatory resolution with the public hearing for this project.
Okay, I will open for a public hearing. Any member of the public wishing to speak may come forward. Please state your name, address, and you will be given three minutes. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to approve resolution R zero three one five two one B?
So moved.
Motion by David. Do I have a second? Second by Pete. This is open for discussion. Does any council member have any comments regarding this item?
Just Megan, I'd just like to thank you again for your efforts. I know that we've had a couple of different cycles of different things, and this is probably the best use. I think it's a great asset or will be for that corridor. It'll provide daytime and nighttime employees, which will go to the restaurants and the stores. So I think it'll be a great use. So thank you.
I certainly want to, yeah, thank you for all your hard work. This is a great, great way to repurpose this store and certainly want to take a look back, the council members that are involved with actually, when we actually put a, an overlay on these, these Marsh stores and some people questioned it, well, here's a good reason why you do stuff like this, to give us another bite at the apple, to come forward and really make this, I mean, you can't ask for a better use for this particular, this particular area. And have it a Fishers resident, a Fisher, Fisher's business owner be a part of this is really, it's just been, it's just been a fabulous way to kind of get this area revitalized. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments? So I'll close the discussion and call for a vote for resolution R zero three one five two one B. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I need abstain.
We have one abstention. Sorry, my mistake. Item number ten, R zero three one five two one C, a request to approve First Amendment to Economic Development Agreement with Rubbermaid.
Thank you again. For the record, Megan Baumgartner, Director of Economic and Community Development for the City of Fishers. This is an amendment to the Jarden, then Newell Brands, now currently owned by Rubbermaid Economic Development Agreement. Back in two thousand and sixteen, we brought forth this original economic development agreement when it was Jarden, then Newell Brands, and now Rubbermaid came in and purchased the six hundred thousand square foot facility off of one hundred and twenty-first Street and Cumberland Road. They've, they started with that being a regional headquarters. Their company was purchased and some of their operations have changed. And if council recalls, last year, when we brought forward their compliance form, they were under their projected headcount that they had committed to. Rubbermaid was able to come in, speak to council about some of the ways that their business has actually expanded in Fishers, just not at this existing footprint. And the request was to come back after having that conversation with council, showing their commitment to Fishers to amend their economic development agreement to reflect the correct number of jobs that'll be at this location in Fishers. So then they'll be in compliance with the rest of their, years of their abatement. So this is the First Amendment to it. If you happen to look back, we had done a previous amendment just, just to their statement of benefits a couple of years ago, but this is the First Amendment for their economic development agreement. And I'm happy to answer any questions regarding this agreement.
Thank you so much, Megan. Do I have a motion to approve resolution R zero three one five two one C?
So moved.
Motion by Pete. Do I have a second? Second by David. This is open for discussion. Does any council member have any comments regarding this item? Seeing none, I will close the discussion and call for a vote to approve resolution R zero three one five two one C. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to our budget and financial section, we have R zero three one five two one D, a request to approve a resolution reestablishing the Cumulative Capital Development Fund for twenty twenty-two, and we have our controller, Lisa, to present this.
The item before you relates to the twenty twenty-two budget. It's a request to reestablish the Cumulative Capital Development Fund. A few years ago, the Division of Local Government Finance changed the requirements, and so cumulative funds are required to be reestablished annually. And for twenty twenty-two, you have to reestablish your cumulative capital fund by April thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. So this does not in any way affect the twenty twenty-one budget and is only related to the twenty twenty-two budget. And the cumulative capital fund maxes out at point zero five cents per one hundred dollars related to tax. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I need to open this for a public hearing. I'm now going to open the public hearing. Any member of the public wishing to speak may come forward. Please state your name, address, and you will be given three minutes to speak. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to approve resolution R zero three one five two one D?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by John, or motion by Pete, second by John. It's now open for discussion for any council member having comments regarding this item. Do we have any comments, questions?
I have a question. Did we receive any public, like, through the form, questions about this? This is always, this is, no?
I'll let Chris answer that one.
I don't believe, yeah, I don't believe so, council member there.
And I was just asking, it, it always brings up questions every year, it seems like. So I was just wondering and making sure that those were addressed. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. We've also, though, over the last two years, as you know, we've had some repetitive questions over the reestablishment of the fund, and the controller's office has put out a really helpful FAQ document that I think has been really good to answer a lot of those similar questions that we've got out. And I think Lisa and her team got that out about thirty days ago, so I think that helped negate a lot of those questions.
That helped, that helped tremendously. I got about three emails, and it was kind of the same questions from last year. I remembered that, but that, that information getting out there was help, very helpful. Because even going through this every year, I still don't remember what the exact.
And it's slightly confusing because it's for the next year, too. So, yeah.
Seeing no further discussion, I'll close the discussion and call for a vote to approve resolution R zero three one five two one D. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Moving to planning and zoning. Zero one one nine two one B, a consideration of a text amendment to the parkside PUD to amend the parking requirements and minimum unit square footage as part of an approved senior apartment project. This will be introduced by Tony Bugatto.
Good evening, council. Tony Bugatto, Director of Planning and Zoning. Yeah, this item before you was moved from last council back to planning commission because there was some discrepancies in the PUD that need to be cleared up, related to the landscape easement. So the property you see on the screen here is the one we're talking about. The use for senior apartments is actually already approved. It's been in the PUD for years. It's been amended a couple of times. This is an attempt to clean up some of the language from last time from some inconsistencies, as well as the landscape easement, which will be removed through Vectren installing a new gas line. So whether the city wanted to or not, the trees are going to be removed. I worked with Vectren and the property owner, tried to do everything we can to keep as many trees, and it's just not possible. They would go through condemnation if they needed to, because this, this gas line is strongly needed here. In this red line, you can see it'll run the entire property line on the east side. So the text amendment will reduce the minimum unit square footage from seven hundred seventy-five to six hundred, and that's only for some of the units, not all of them. So they have three different unit sizes, the smallest one being six hundred. The parking ratio, it still complies with the number of parking spaces that were previously approved, but the ratio was not correct to the unit count. So they're modifying that to just clarify that it's one point zero eight units per unit. And then again, removal of the thirty-foot tree preservation area. This exhibit shows you what it would look like with the new forty-foot green space. So there will be still landscaping, and they're going to install a fence on the east side, and then they're going to maintain a ten-foot landscaping strip before you get to the parking lot. But this thirty area was where the trees are located today. Again, those will be removed. This exhibit shows you a cross-section with the gas line going right down the middle. And again, there'll be some landscaping and fencing here to help screen the project from the residents. This item's been before the planning commission twice. Both times were recommended for approval, and staff's here to answer any questions, and the petitioner is also available.
Do I have a motion to approve ordinance zero one one nine two one B?
So moved.
Motion by Pete. Do I have a second? Second by Sam. This is open for discussion. Does any council member have any comments regarding this item?
Just to chime in from the planning commission, just to let everybody know, I think this was very much precipitated by, you know, the gas company coming in and pulling the line. If, if that hadn't come in, no changes would have been made. I think the mitigations which they've done here were not only acceptable to planning commission and staff, but to the residents to the east, which would be affected. And I think they probably came up with the best solution, knowing that they weren't going to get that gas line moved, and it was highly needed. So that's just the planning commission update.
I will close the discussion and call for a vote to approve ordinance zero one one nine two one B. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to item number thirteen, consideration of a text amendment to the amend the West Concept Plan in the Marina PUD. This will be introduced by Tony Bugatto.
Yes, thank you once again. Tony Bugatto, Director of Planning and Zoning. This item before you, for final reading, was here for first reading and planning commission as well. It's an amendment to the Marina PUD on the West Concept Plan. The East Concept Plan used to show a future restaurant and some potential office and a Marina boat launch on the east side. With the city building the park now on the east side, that's changed. And staff started working with them about realigning their alignment on the west side of the road to accommodate the future park due to the county requirements. And through those discussions, they approached us and said, well, we've also been wanting to amend our PUD to provide a restaurant use that we used to have on the east side, but move it to the west. So that will include, basically, the amendment is for the restaurant, but there will be some improvements to the landscaping and screening of the boat docks there today, as well as an improvement for parking lot. And here's the concept plan that was before both planning commission and council previously. It allows for a five thousand square foot pad. The petitioner has indicated there is no identified restaurant today. They're looking at probably being five years out before they have a restaurant built and identified. So this is just to, again, allow the use on the Marina for a future tenant and the additional parking, again, landscaping modifications, and the relocation of the driveway, as you'll see here, connecting to the city's future park. The city is looking to break ground in April, so it's very important for us to have this driveway situated and figured out before we break ground for phase one. Here is a, just a massing of the building. It's going to be a two-story proposal with a basement and then a patio around the Marina. This item, again, was before planning commission. There was some, several points around fencing, landscaping, and then the parking lot, which has been addressed in the PUD since the planning commission meeting, and the planning commission recommended approval. The petitioner is on the line as long as teams is still working, and then I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Tony. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance zero two one five two one F?
Like a motion to approve?
Motion by John. Do I have a second? Second by Cecilia. This is open for discussion. Does any council member have comments regarding this item?
I do. I want to make sure, Tony, you and I talked about some of the things that I talked about at planning commission as, as it related to.
This particular project, and, and one was the fencing that went around to protect where that big hole in the ground. If no one's driven by it lately, it's full of water now. I mean, it's completely full. I was shocked at how quickly that got full, but it's totally full. So there is a fence line that's being put in there by citizens, I believe.
Correct.
That's there, so it's going to protect anybody from walking in that parking lot. The other commitments were to make sure that landscaping was down so that we get sight lines, okay, coming across the bridge in the other direction due to speed, even though our Fishers Police Department are highly patrolling that area lately, because I see them about every other morning. And then there's no boat storage that's going to be allowed on that property once this thing goes to a restaurant. Is that?
No, they're still going to have boat storage, but they're going to move them to, and then screen them better than what they are today. But the boat storage will still remain to the south.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember that part of it. So, you know, the problem which I have with that is that we're going to park across the street, right? And maybe I forgot about it, Tony. I can't remember, right? So I would be, I'm a hundred percent in favor of the project. I think, I think the, the residents really are going to like this particular project down there, and I think they're going to do enough to the parking there. But, you know, with our park going across the street, I would modify the motion to say approve as is, but no boat storage there ever, okay? After that comes, I mean, it's a restaurant at that point, and therefore no boat storage. I mean, that's kind of where I'm at with that. And I thought we had talked about that, but I could be wrong, Tony. I apologize, so.
Yeah, no, from the discussions we had, it's always, the boat storage is part of it. I believe to make that modification, though, we'd also have to recommend go back to planning commission, and they would have to consider it again before we can adopt that, which would delay the timing.
Right. Well, they've got five years before they're talking about putting a restaurant in there anyway, so the timing doesn't seem to be overly critical, right? And, I mean, if they're online, I mean, I don't know if that's, if, if they want to go ahead and acquiesce to that committal, because I don't remember seeing that, and again, I apologize there. But as we drive down through that area, you've got a bunch of houses being built in Cambridge along the one side. They've taken down a ton of trees, kind of going into that particular area over there. They've added a pump house that over there, that they're shielding up pretty well, and the boat, I mean, the pump house, for the most part, looks pretty good. They're going to landscape along that barrier. The last thing I want to see is, is three or four-story boat storage thing sitting right next to one of our premier parks.
Chris, don't we need a second on the amended motion?
But just real quick, a clarifying point, because I think, didn't we look at whether boat storage was in fact in approved use under its current zoning?
Yeah, we did. They have approval that's illegal, non-conforming from Noblesville. They have a condition of use from it that goes back to the late eighties, early nineties. So this approval is a grandfathered use. Once they're removed, it wouldn't be allowed again. So, I mean, we could approve the PUD and say it's prohibited, but it's still allowed to remain there until they remove it.
That, that I'm okay with. That I have no issue with. You know, I mean, once they remove it, maybe even when the restaurant goes in and they still keep it there?
Well, if they keep it, right, as long as it stays there as a use, it's still going to be grandfathered in, even if we put that in the PUD. But once for, they moved it, say, off-site, then it's gone.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not okay with that. I'm just not. I think if they're going to go ahead and improve the site, improve the site. And again, I don't think you need to have a boat storage sitting there.
Need a second, need a second on the amendment.
But we're saying it may not, you know, it'd have to go back, I guess, Brad, right?
We have to go back to the planning commission. There's a, there are, there's a component of our park that is tied to this driveway access on this rezone. I wanted to check with Sarah how time-sensitive that is.
Yeah, so that was the timing issue. It's the, it's the lay of the park, not the restaurant.
How long will it delay? Like, what will it take?
It's, so, so basically, yeah, you'd be back to planning commission next month, and then back here in April potentially with a quick turnaround. So, it wouldn't delay the park a significant time period to...
That hurt.
Yeah.
That, that big impact on you if we did, if we did it a month? I mean, is that going to be, you know, jack cost or affect our planning?
I mean, the bids are out now. We're scheduled to move away to look at, um, start construction mid-April on Phase 1A and then Phase 1C, but it's certain hogging, so it would affect the full phase and whichever you have.
Yeah, it's due to be back in the mid-June.
Yeah. We're in the middle, it'll be in the middle of, you know, the height of top construction season, so it's critical if we get started when we can to push it longer than I need certain times to fall over the weather.
One of the, Tony, you said something about additional screening and so around the boat storage. Can you explain what their improvements are for boat storage?
Well, they're going to, they're going to increase the landscaping in Birmingham, other than what we talked about at planning commission. They're going to look at reducing the landscaping around the entry so that there's no line of sight issues trying to exit with the trailers. But, yeah, they're going to increase the landscaping here and this side of the property line to have berm and new vegetation to screen that existing boat dock.
Let me, let me take a crack at this. So, if they were to move that boat storage from the high visibility of that street, right across the street from our park, move it over to the L portion or that top portion up there, put the boat storage over there, because when they store their boats, it's winter, okay? And it's off that road and also not facing our park. I would be more okay with it over there than I am sitting right in front of the entrance. That's all I'm trying to say. It doesn't look good, and it's never looked good. But, I mean, the boat dock, your launch, doesn't look good, right? But, it's been there forever, so everybody gets used to it. But, if we're going to improve it, let's improve it. But, let's not, you know, leave a red elephant sitting right in the entryway as you're improving the site.
That, that boat storage has been there for 30 years, and we're going to take it away from them? Doesn't make any sense.
I'm not saying take it away, Brad. I'm just saying move it.
You're saying take it away.
Well, I am too. It's ugly.
Yeah. 30 years, and you're going to take something away from somebody? Doesn't make sense.
Well, I mean, they're asking us to do something, Brad, right? They're asking us to go ahead and give them a new zoning to allow something. So, here's the time when we do things like that, right? My suggestion, you don't have to be in favor of it, which I get. I'm just throwing it out there. I mean, if the rest of the council is okay keeping a boat storage there, you know, vote it that way. I'm just giving you my opinion from my resident's side, having to drive by it every day. That's all I'm saying. I'm just going along with my residents, Brad, like I hear it from you.
Pete, at the planning, I'm just asking, because I wouldn't hear. But, at the planning commission, when you said that it was discussed, how much was it discussed at this level or what?
Yeah, and again, I don't remember ever hearing that. I, maybe it was my assumption, David, and I could be wrong, that I assumed that it was going away, right, during the improvements, because no one really talked about it.
Yeah, I mean, I just, in the presentation, I said they were going to improve the landscaping and screen it, but then there was no other discussion, so maybe you didn't catch it, Pete, sorry. And I know I mentioned it during the first reading too, when we were here last time. And I don't know if we can get the petitioner on the line. Normally, I'm on the Zoom calls or the team's call, and I can see the number. But, if we can ask if Gordon's available, if Tracy can see if they're on the line, he may be able to add any additional information.
Pete says he does see him online.
Okay, can you, can he talk?
Ask Gordon to unmute.
Gordon, can you unmute if you're hearing me?
Madam President, while we're waiting, just point of order here. We did have a motion and a second.
Did we have a second to Pete's motion?
No, 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 but that was an amendment to the motion. I just want to keep track of where we are here.
I think there was a motion.
There's a motion and a second.
Time that...
Yeah.
So, we, we need a second on Pete's amendment.
That should have been first.
Correct.
No, we need a second. Robert's Rules of Orders, excuse me, not to knock chairman. Discussion is not allowed.
Brad, as you pointed out succinctly in our January meeting, we don't follow Robert's Rules of Order. So, but you're exactly right. Somebody needs a second to that motion. So, we can't go ahead and do that.
We need a second on the motion, then discussion, vote on Pete's motion, and then back to the original motion.
That's correct.
Correct, is that correct?
Thank you.
So, Pete just motion, made a motion to amend. John seconded it. Is that correct? Did I hear you second the motion, John?
Correct.
Yep.
Hello, hello?
Okay, so we have the petitioner.
Gordon, did you hear the conversation?
I did. I'm sorry. I'm having trouble with Microsoft. I was trying to get in, and I guess, I can't see, so I'll address Pete. The conversation was that we were going to add additional screening, and the topo on the south side was the best place to put the boats, to screen them completely from Oleo Road, because the land drops considerably on the southern portion, and that's why we selected that, to screen them where they wouldn't be seen from Oleo Road.
So, are we seeing them directly on the map then, Gordon? I know you don't see that, but I'm seeing them midway through the parking lot.
And if you look at the amended concept plan, it's got a cross-hatched area where we're going to, where we're going to put the boats. It's cross-hatched. It's from the building south. It has boat storage area.
Okay, so, Tony, are you in that right area where they want to move that to?
Correct. It's going to be moved to the south side.
So, this particular plan is incorrect. So, that particular area with the landscaping that they can put in there, and I understand that topo there very well, that's a completely different area than the entrance right as you're coming in, which could then be seen, because we're talking about taking lower foliage as we head into the bridge, because there's your sightline problems heading that way. So, if they pull that boat storage down to the south, I don't have an issue with that. Just want to let everybody know. When they pull that down to the farthest south point, as opposed to directly across from that entrance, directly across from our park, directly in line of sight from everybody, that, that, he's correct. The topo changes not a lot, but enough to make a difference.
Yeah, because their existing driveway is, sorry, go ahead, Gordon.
Yeah, and, and I think that's right. From, let's say like this, the new entrance that lines up with the park entrance, the new entrance that I'm going to coordinate with Steve Farinbach on width and landscaping, the boat storage will be from the southern part of that south on the site. And we'll, we'll attempt to landscape it where you can't see it by looking in the entrance. And it's from that building that's there, Pete, that's sort of ugly, you know, that ugly building setting in there?
Yeah, I'm very familiar with the ugly building.
It's from there south. Pardon me?
Yeah, I said I'm familiar with the ugly building. I drive by it twice a day.
Yeah, so, it's from that, it's from that building south is where the boat storage will be.
Coming south.
And it'll just be primarily in summer and winter, and we'll screen it up with evergreens and trees that hold their foliage. And there's a, as you know, there's a big drop in topo there, so we thought that was the appropriate place to put it, versus right now, it's sort of everywhere out there.
Right. So, we're pulling it south on this, this site. So, it's not depicted in the correct space as you show it there.
No, it is. This is the south parking lot that's cross-hatched. So, it's going to be, so their existing driveway is down on the very south. Now that the driveway's being moved north, they're going to be able to put all the storage here. So, you have the slope bringing it down.
So, storage is coming down south.
And you're going to have new landscaping and a berm to screen it.
Right. And the ugly building?
The building is still there, right here, right now.
Okay.
The build, the buildings, we're just going to leave it, we, Pete, we're, our goal is we're going to think about what to do with it. We may take it down, unassemble it, move it to Morris. We're going to talk to staff about it, but it, it's not going to be used for boat storage or anything. The boat storage will be on trailers from the south part of the building, south on the site.
Well, I'm perfectly okay with it being south, you know, Gordon. I think that's a great place to go, because again, I understand the site very well. I would like a commitment that that building is going to get disassembled at some point in time when you guys improve that site and move somewhere, or move it to the south.
Well, I, it's hard for, I'm, I'm just a lawyer. It's hard for me to make a commitment on when. I mean, I'll commit, and I'll work with staff and try to have a discussion in the future about it and keep you in the loop. But, we don't intend, it really can't be used for anything, so...
Again, a great reason to take it down, if it's, it can't be used for anything, right? So, I think the point is that I need staff to go ahead and make sure we're working with those guys. And again, I'm not asking to do it tomorrow. I'm not asking, I'm saying once they build the restaurant in there, right, and they start doing improvements, they do the landscaping, everything starts to take shape with this new project, you know, everything goes to the south. I have no issue with the storage going to the south because then we're protected by the landscaping plan, and, you know, you're not going to see it from the entrance. But, I would like to still get that building out of there. So, if he's okay at least considering it, I'll leave that up to staff to figure out which point in time it can be taken out.
Pete, since you said you have no issue, are you withdrawing your motion?
I will withdraw the motion. I was waiting to hear back from Gordon, but, which I think he said, I think, Gordon, you said you're fine working with staff. And again, I'm, you know, if you guys aren't going to build this thing up for three, four, or five years, right, I'm not asking you to take it down tomorrow, even if you're not putting boats in it. I'm just saying, once this site has been improved, with the new restaurant going in, or whatever you're going to put in there that's acceptable per the zoning code to put in there, that that would then be moved or taken down, or, you know, not sat there right by the front entrance?
Yeah, I just don't have a good, it's hard for me to make a commitment on timing. We're discussing taking it down and maybe moving it to Morris behind a levee and using it there, but we've got to get zoning approval. So, timing is difficult for me to commit to. But, I hear what you're saying. You'd like to see it down before the restaurant goes in, and I guess we could commit to communicate with staff about when we're going to remove it, disassemble it. And the staff's got to approve our restaurant, so they could stare at me and say, Pete would like to see the building moved before we approve the restaurant.
I'm okay with that. I'll withdraw my motion. Amendment.
So, what's the motion?
Okay, so...
I just want to clarify the motion then, back to the motion.
The motion was to not have boat storage on the site.
No, the amendment, but the motion.
The amendment is off the table now. It's been removed. So, now we're back to the original motion to approve this. Are we all in agreement on that, Chris?
Correct.
All right. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thanks, Gordon.
Thanks, thanks, everybody. I appreciate your assistance. Thanks.
Okay, moving on to 031521, request to approve right-of-way utility easement vacation for the Maple Dell Development.
Good evening. For the record, Ross Hillary, City of Fishers, Planner 3. Before you tonight is a request to approve a right-of-way utility easement vacation for the Maple Dell Development. The properties are located south of the intersection of Holland Drive and East 116th Street. HG Acquisition Company has requested vacation of both the right-of-way and easements within the Maple Dell subdivision that you'll see here. This is necessary to redevelop the parcel into the multifamily development that consists of 191 units of apartments, townhomes, and duplexes. That's currently known as the Maple Dell Development. And just for project timeline, J.C. Hart and HWC Engineering have currently been going through the TAC process with both the IOP, the primary and secondary plant. The architectural and site plan was approved at the Nickel Plate Review Committee on February 24th, 3/0. And the existing plat for the Maple Dell subdivision and the primary plat will go before our plat committee on March 25th. You'll see here in the exhibit, that was attached. This is the right-of-way and the hatched area, and then in the darker gray is the utilities, both of these, which they are seeking to vacate for the development of the project. Staff recommends that City Council suspend the rules and approve as presented after, of course, a public hearing.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. I'm now going to open the public hearing. Any member of the public wishing to speak may come forward. Please state your name and address, and you will be given three minutes. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules and approve this project on first reading?
So moved.
Motion by Pete. Do I have a second?
Aye.
This is open for discussion. Does any council member have any comments regarding the suspicion of, the suspension of the rules? I'm going to close the discussion and call for a vote to suspend the rules on ordinance 031521. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 031521?
So moved.
Motion by Pete. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by John. This is open for discussion. Does any council member have any comments regarding the ordinance? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote on ordinance 031521. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to item number 15, a request to approve a voluntary annexation of one lot known as Legacy Bible Church Property. This will be introduced by Tony? By Hillary? By Ross?
Yeah. Again, Ross Hillary, City of Fishers, Planner 3 here at the City of Fishers. Before you tonight is Legacy Bible Church at 13490 Howell Road. Happy to answer any questions.
We have this for a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. Any member of the public wishing to speak about this annexation, please come forward and state name, address, and we'll be given three minutes. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Are there any questions from the council regarding this annexation?
Have first reading.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 16, 021521, a request to approve a voluntary annexation of one lot known as Summerfield Annexation. We have Ross Hillary here to introduce this.
Yes, again, Ross Hillary, City of Fishers. Summerfield Property is located at 11137 East 136th Street. This consists of 5.10 acres. Happy to answer any questions.
Ross, why are they doing it?
Why are they annexing to the City of Fishers? Is that your question? They were eligible based on conditions that were put in with utilities that they requested. And they're also requesting a rezone from R2 to a state residential that more aligns with our, with our UDO. You'll see that rezone here later tonight.
Just wanted to confirm.
Okay, I'm going to open this for a public hearing. Any member of the public wishing to speak about this annexation, please come forward and state name, address, and you will be given three minutes. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Are there any further questions from the council regarding this annexation?
Have first reading.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 17, a request to approve a voluntary annexation of one lot known as Weatherill Estates Annexation.
Ross Hillary, City of Fishers, before you tonight. This property is located at 10275 Cumberland Road. It consists of 6.41 acres. And to answer your question on this one, Pete, they are eligible. They are next to, the property to the north is within the city limits, and the homeowners wish to subdivide to build a second home behind the existing home. So, they were required to annex because of that.
I'm going to open for public, oh, sorry. I'm going to open for public hearing. Any member of the public wishing to speak about this annexation, please come forward and state name, address, and we'll be given three minutes. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Are there any further questions regarding this annexation from the council?
Have first reading.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 18, 021521C, a request to approve a voluntary annexation of one lot known as Sunderman Estates Annexation.
Again, Ross Hillary, City of Fishers, before you tonight. This property is located at 11110 East 116th Street, consists of 5.07 acres. They're eligible to annex property both to the north and south, is within city limits, and they platted and wished to construct a home here. And part of that process, they agreed to annex within the City of Fishers.
The two adjoining properties there, Ross, are they unincorporated area?
That is correct. They're both unincorporated.
Do we make our contingency requirements on north and south?
They did, yes.
Okay, perfect.
Happy to answer questions.
Yep.
I'm going to open for a public hearing. Any member of the public wishing to speak about this annexation, please come forward and state name, address, and we'll be given three minutes. I'm going to close the public hearing. Are there any questions from council regarding this annexation?
Have first reading.
Thank you. Number 19, 021521C, a request to approve a voluntary annexation of one lot known as Number 19, 021521D, consideration of a rezone from ENI 69 overlay to PUDM for a mixed-use PUD on 36 acres east side of USA Parkway. You have Tony.
Yes, good evening once again, Tony Bagado, Director of Planning and Zoning. This item is before you now for the rezone, for the second time for first reading. The council also reviewed the EDA earlier tonight. Again, this project is located off USA Parkway and just south of IKEA Way and the Fishers District, and being, is being developed, proposed by Thompson Thrift, with a residential project, kind of a continuation of the Fishers District. The project before you is showing as Area A and Area B concept plans. Area A is the primary focus for tonight, it's going to be a residential project that's a mix of villas and townhomes for rental. There's a lot of open space amenities throughout the project with the public trail that we talked about, the lineal park, and connects to the district and this property to the south. The commercial site, again, will be developed later, it's just showing a couple of concept plans as an example, and that would be developed at a future time. Here's the architecture for the Village District Parrot Villas. This will go before the Plan Commission and the PUD Committee on April 14th. So here's the preliminary design architecture, staff's been supportive of the design of this project. Here's the Fishers District Townhomes, and just for a point of reference, these are located more to the north of the site, so closer to the district site and more kind of in line with the hotel from a scaling perspective in height. So these are the three-story townhomes. And here's some imagery of the clubhouse for one of the amenity areas. It'll have a pool and a bunch of features as well. And then here's a sample of some other parks throughout the network that staff's very supportive of. It complies with our active kind of open space requirements that we're seeing on new projects. And again, this will be presented at the April 14th Plan Commission, and staff's available for any questions, as well as the petitioner and their representative.
Are there any questions from the council regarding this rezone?
So I've got some, not so much questions, but comments, Tony, and really just kind of a follow-up. I was on a Zoom call with neighbors from Walnut Hills and their HOA regarding this, this protected rezone, and, and the folks from Thompson Thrift did a really nice job of kind of going through and addressing concerns, but as it goes through and kind of goes this process to Planning Commission, I thought appropriate just to kind of raise some of the issues that they brought up just to make sure that they're, you know, put on the record here what they're looking for. And this will all be addressed for a public hearing in April, so let those folks kind of do their job. But certainly they were concerned about having a path separate from where their subdivision is. And Walnut Hills, and to their, to their detriment, I felt sorry for them because I remember a few years back, they had their 100-year flood and a lot of that area flooded. A lot of folks, I mean, just had horrible flooding down in that area. So they're very concerned about drainage and how that's all going to work, and I think the hope is the drainage will actually be better. But again, just something we need to kind of make sure that we, we address here. The fencing that's going to be on in between the, this development and the subdivision, the quality of the fence, and again, even heard Thompson Thrift say, hey, we come by and we'll clean it every year, so I think there's certainly a keen awareness there that they're wanting to address those issues. Buffering, really important. The retention pond, the location of that, you know, things of that nature. And also, if I recall, this is, has this always been zoned office?
No, formerly, when I first came here, it was part of the Exit 5 PUD in Sunbeam, and then we went through the employment node rezoning to protect it for corporate headquarters or a site-specific PUD if we deemed necessary.
So it's been kind of a good placeholder, if you will, for this, because before that, it was, it was zoned retail.
Yeah, it could have been commercial apartments, could have been anything, car sales, storage.
Home Depot, anybody right along in there. So just something, got a nice placeholder to be able to have a nice conversation about doing this right. Lastly, there's also mentioned that, you know, there's some property, properties to the south, not so much for this project, but having, having your team maybe reach out to them to talk about, here's how that's property is zoned currently, and, you know, nothing's happening right now, but just to let you know, here's, here's what's, here's what could happen. So separate from the Thompson Thrift project, but having some outreach with them just to keep them in the know as to what's going on. So just some comments that came from the folks from Walnut Hills on Zoom call that I had with folks from Thompson Thrift, you guys did an excellent job of answering some of those questions. I want to make sure these get addressed, and I know they will, but I just put that out here for the record, so I want to know that we're listening to them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sorry being so long-winded.
Tony, to add to what John said, the other, the other thing that I received was the vinyl fencing, could it be changed to a different type? Elevate the, the materials for the fencing, if that was a possibility, and also putting the fencing on top of the berm to add more privacy. And then, last time, this was before us, I had asked about the parking, whether there was going to be covered parking or enclosed parking. I, it's just my personal thoughts that, you know, a luxury development like this should have some kind of covered, I never got a really clear answer, but I just would suggest, you know, where we could have more covered, covered parking or enclosed parking.
Yeah, I know there was some discussion last time, I don't know if Eric, if there hasn't been any changes yet, if they want to talk about tonight, or we could wait till after Plan Commission, we can look at that.
Any comments or questions?
Have first reading.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number 20, 031521A, consideration of a rezone from R2 to ER. And we have Tony here to introduce this.
Yes, thank you for the last time, Tony Bagado, Director of Planning and Zoning, and this is a first reading of a rezone for Mr. and Mrs. Summerfield, who is on the line on the team's call. This was the property that was also just reviewed for annexation. They built a brand-new home, and so they were required to have annex as part of getting the sewer hookup, and that's what that came for. In discussions with annexation, though, we've also talked about rezoning. This is currently zoned R2, and they would prefer to keep it more rural and like the larger lot look, and so they're asking to this to be downzoned from R2 to a state residential. They have talked to me about looking at other properties, maybe next door, as time allows, to even protect that land even further. We felt that this was a good location for larger lots, and staff's recommending approval, and this is for first reading, so it'll go to Plan Commission in April.
Are there any questions from the, from the council regarding this rezone?
Have first reading, that's, that's easy.
All right, first reading. Regular items, is there, are there any unfinished or new business?
Madam President, um, did, I did not, did the council members receive the public comments that came in through the forums, the online forums?
No, and, and council member there, that's my fault beforehand. I just got a note, there was one message, and we are going to put it on the record for tonight and distribute it to the council message, members regarding the comment that came in. It was regarding an economic development project and a neighbor out there for that, so I'll make sure that that gets distributed to all council members tonight.
Okay, so we'll move to the commi- community comment section, and we know that the, basically what Chris just stated, those comments will be placed into the public record if they were mailed in. It is now open for public comment, any public, any member of the public wishing to speak may step forward and address the council, you will be given three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address.
Yes, good evening, my name is Abraham Wondergem, and I live at 16331 Lar Valley Drive in the Britton Falls subdivision, Dell Webb Co. Complex. I'm here this evening to talk about the Station 97 with the, you know, fire. In October of 2020, you, council, approved that. And you approved it, you know, unanimously that it was going to be built. I want to start just basically by, by reading, you know, something to you here. This is from the 2012 Fire Annual Compliance Report, and it says that newly annexed areas located in the eastern response areas are not within reach of existing stations based upon the standard of coverage document. Plans are in place to locate and develop two additional stations to address this area. Well, one of them was done, 104th Street was done. We're still waiting in our area. And this project has been going on now since 2011, 2012. It's been kicked down the road a number of times. To that effect, I got involved with this back in July of 19, when a very good friend of mine had a tremendous medical episode at one of our community parties out in Britton Falls. And it took 15 minutes for that ambulance to get there. Now, concerning response times, you know, we have been told that response time, excuse me, is seven minutes to Britton Falls. Well, for the last six months, we've been using an app that's called PulsePoint, all one word, P-U-L-S-C, point, P-O-I-N-T. And it's a marvelous tool, you can track. And there's, you know, when I got a computer with my corporation, there was no way I could hide anymore. You know, they had me. And basically what this does, this tells you the trucks that are sent, it tells you the dispatch time it went out, and it tells you the arrival time. Three very important things. Actually, if you look at the readings from PulsePoint, to get to my house in the back part of Britton Falls, we're looking at 12 to 13 minutes, not seven. Well, that extra five to six minutes can mean the difference between life and death. So to that effect, in July of 2019, Armin Asadurian and myself, Chief Arusa and Mayor Fadness, scheduled a meeting, and we were very pleased that Mayor Fadness and Chief Arusa had a proposed solution. And they actually were looking at building the station that's desperately needed out there. And we were given a timeframe, you know, for that. It was, okay, put it in the 2020 budget, or, or, excuse me, in 2021, 2020 budget, build it in 2021, open January 1 of 2022. Now, COVID came and visited. And I'm not going to argue against COVID whatsoever, the city did what it had to do, I understand. And they did a good job. But the thing of it is, is now, after the January of '21 meeting here, the last meeting I attended here, I talked with Mayor Fadness just briefly after the, the meeting. He stated to see Chief Arusa, talk to him about it, because he was in charge of the project, I did. Well, we have a whole different timeframe now. And I've got copies here which I'm going to pass to you, my assistant is in Florida, by the way. And with those, you can see what the timeline is from Chief Arusa. Now, the only thing that changed on there was the site location. Chief Arusa said that the site has been chosen, it's over by IU Hospital in Saxony. It's not at 136th Street, the location. That's fine. The thing of it is, what concerns me about, there's two things basically, and I'll try to make this as brief as I can. The council has a tremendous job to do here as far as taking and stewarding the City of Fishers, but the thing of it is, in the last meeting I attended, there were a total of over, I'm looking here, 279 and 154 units at Gray Eagle and Grantham that were approved. Tonight, there's another 490 that are approved. More and more people just keep coming and coming and coming. You're blowing that balloon of coverage more and more and more and more this way. And I pray to God it doesn't break. Now, for us in Britton Falls, it's a real sensitive issue. You know, the, the, the old timers out there that have been there since the, the community developed, they're reaching age, you know, I'm a young puppet, 72. And the thing of it is, by adding these homes and these houses and these developments, and there's 10 additional developments that are being developed out there, and now you've added Grantham, you know, to it, you just keep pouring more and more water into the glass, and sooner or later, that glass is going to overflow, and I hope that no one loses sight. The second thing concerns me is, in reading local news media, Councilman Zimmerman here has been put in charge of a commission, more or less, to go out and do surveys to find out in the future, you know, what the City of Fishers would like to see happen, or residents would like to see happen. And there's, there's talk about field, there's talk about field houses and all this. And, you know, that scares me because we're going to stick something else in line. Okay, I will conclude then. I'm just saying that my area out there is very much underserved. But yet, I pay the same amount of property taxes Hamilton County makes me pay. Our response times are, are longer than the average response times for the neighborhoods that you live in. It's a problem, it needs to be done. The completion date now, the last date I got from Chief Arusa is now the fall of 2022. That's kicking the project down the road again another year, and that may change, who knows? I, I don't know, it changes. The thing of it is, in 2020, you voted for something, it should be done. The thing that concerns me-
We've heard your comments, sir, we need to be moving the meeting along, I'm sorry. We usually allow three minutes, I let you, allowed you a little bit more, but we need to be moving the meeting along.
Okay, yes, yes ma'am, I understand, I'm not a developer, I don't get unlimited time. The thing of it is, is, all I'm saying is, this needs to be looked at, this project needs to be moved along, it is a crucial thing as far as we're concerned out there. It should be the number-one priority on the, the issue this year. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for your comments.
Perhaps, Council President, could just provide a quick update, and I do appreciate how strongly Britton Falls residents feel about this. We are taking the design that we did at Station 93 on Allisonville Road, just picking up that design and moving it to the location at Saxony. So what that does is it cuts off a tremendous amount of time from a design perspective, because we're going to basically just build the same building that we did last year out at Station 93. We just completed a feasibility study to figure out which location, from a tax dollar perspective, and from a response time makes the most sense, and that selected the IU property. Chief Arusa has a meeting set up with, with the CEO of IU Hospital to work through that agreement. And we're currently in the selection process for someone to build the building. So I still believe we're going to make tremendous progress in building this fire station this year. Whether it's done January 1st, or whether it's done sometime in that first quarter, I don't know. I'm sure Chief is trying to hedge his bets, because you don't know sometimes what happens with construction. But this is a priority, it's funded, it's going to get built. We did save, I think, a decent amount of time by just taking the design that was at Station 93's and moving it to this new facility. So I don't take what the gentleman said lightly in terms of their concerns in this area, and we're going to get that station built here, it will be underway this summer. So progress is being made, it's not being delayed, we are, we are moving as fast as we can at this point.
Thank you for that update, Mayor. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak in the public comment section? Seeing none, we'll close the community comment.
Motion adjourned.
I'll take a motion to adjourn, meeting is adjourned.